We are back in session May 18th. And we're coming to item number 20, which is the parking text amendment. That's number five TA 2020. I'll ask the principal planner, Brian Cluff, to please make the presentation.
Good evening and thank you Mayor Ortega and council members. This is Brian Cluff with the city's current planning department. And I'll be presenting case five TA 2020 for you tonight. Next slide, please. So to start off with, two weeks ago at the the May 4th city council meeting, staff had presented an overview of the changes proposed to the parking requirements as part of this text amendment. The city council reviewed and had a lot of discussion about the changes. Ended up continuing the case to tonight's meeting with a vote of four to three. Many items were discussed. This this slide here outlines some of the key points. So first, many of the council members agreed that enforcement of the existing code regarding free parking, specifically for hotels, office and multifamily residential should be considered a priority. Additional enforcement measures here could improve the parking situation in Old Town without changing any parking requirements potentially. Next, many council members suggested that it may be more appropriate to move forward with the ordinance changes more incrementally, possibly focusing on multifamily residential by itself, or maybe multifamily residential and hotels at this time. Other changes could be made to the code after behaviors normalize and more data can be collected. Many council members agreed that guest parking for multifamily residential is an immediate issue that should be addressed now. We heard that an appropriate ratio for that may be in the area of one per five units or 1.6 units. There was a lot of discussion regarding employee parking for hotels. It was it was clear that employee parking needs to be accounted for. And it's important that the employee parking be provided onsite. There was also discussion regarding administrative parking reductions. Many council members felt the existing 20% reduction that's allowed may not be appropriate and that this administrative reduction should be reduced or possibly removed. There was some discussion regarding the definition of mixed use in the code. It was acknowledged that the code does not specifically define mixed use in a way that requires certain commercial to residential floor area ratios. It was suggested that this be addressed as part of the code changes. The proposed requirements for hotels include an exemption of the first 5,000 square feet of commercial and/or conference spaces and meeting facilities. Some council members expressed concern that this may be too much floor area to exempt. Suggestions of 2,000 square feet and 1,500 square feet were provided as possible alternatives. Lastly, there was discussion regarding the data behind the recommendations. And some council members asked for staff to provide additional information with regard to the data that staff has available and used to arrive at the recommendations that are proposed in the text amendment. Next slide, please. So after the, based on the discussion, as well as follow-up that staff conducted over the last couple of weeks, there are some proposed changes to the code from what the council saw last time. So this is a quick summary of those specific changes that were made after the May 4th city council review. So the first change is related to the mixed use developments parking ratio. So staff made some updates to the previous draft to provide a qualifier that applies to the the use of a mixed use development parking ratio. So the revised draft now requires at least 20% of the floor area be non-residential in order to utilize the mixed use development parking ratio. And that would be that ratio that's listed in tables 9.103A and B of the proposed draft. Next is related to clarification of the limitations that are associated with the mixed use shared parking models and parking master plans. This is not intended to change the way these programs are administered, but simply clarify some of the language that was unclear in the text. Next is a change to the administrative parking reductions that are allowed by the code currently. So this change proposes to reduce the administrative reductions from 20% down to 10%. The next point here, ordinance 4500 governance. This provides provides language in the code that regulates the applicability of the changes that are included in this text amendment. The the change provides a cutoff point for projects that are in the process or may have already received approvals, essentially grandfathering those projects that have already received a city council approval of a zoning application that already includes parking calculations, or if they received a development review board approval that includes parking ratios with that approval. Additionally, this afternoon, staff sent out some further updates to this section of the code that provides additional clarification of applicability. So we would ask that if the council takes action tonight, that the amended language in this section is included in the motion. And that language should have been provided to you tonight. Lastly, the the last bullet here is in reference to some changes to the downtown overlay waiver based on council feedback. The current code allows a waiver of up to 2,000 square feet of commercial floor area. The previous staff proposed proposal reduced that to 500 square feet. So this new draft proposes a waiver of 1,000 square feet for commercial with some additional qualifiers related to existing onsite parking. So those being, in order to use the downtown overlay waiver for commercial floor area, a site must have at least one parking space existing onsite. And then to use the residential waiver, which would be for one dwelling unit in combination with the commercial waiver, a site must have at least two parking spaces existing onsite. Next slide, please. As I mentioned a couple of slides back, there's been a lot of feedback and discussion on enforcement. Although this is not necessarily related to the text amendment, I wanted to touch on this really quick before we move on to the rest of the presentation to let the council know staff is moving forward with increased enforcement of the code provisions regarding free parking, specifically for hotels, office and multifamily residential. So on the screen there is the is the existing code provision for free parking in the downtown area. So that does require that that the required parking for developments be provided at no cost to the patrons, employees, residents and their guests of the development. So this week, staff is sending notice to owners and managers of hotels, multifamily and office developments in the Old Town regarding these requirements for free parking. As we work through this, we expect there may be improvement in the parking areas and or the parking situation in certain areas of of the Old Town area. Next slide, please. So some council members had asked for more data from staff, mainly more details about the data that we already have and data that staff used to arrive at the recommendations that are included in the current proposal. So the the next 11 to 12 slides are going to be a quick summary of the background data that we've been using. So please bear with me. We should be able to move through through them relatively quickly. So this current slide is providing some general points of comparison with the other Valley cities, which we've referenced a few times through the process. So first is that all but one of the Valley cities that we looked at have a different, most of the time lower, parking requirement in their downtown area as opposed to their the rest of their city. Next, all Val all Valley cities do allow for parking reductions, and most of which are allowed administratively. And then third, on the third bullet here, three out of the 10 other Valley cities we looked at do not require any parking in their downtown area. Next slide, please. This graphic shows vehicle ownership rates per unit and provides some quick references to some different parts of Old Town, Southern Scottsdale, Paradise Valley and North Scottsdale. As this information is reviewed, one can start to notice differences between more urban areas of Old Town and other suburban rural areas of the city and the valley. You can see on the left is a sample of an Old Town area that includes several multifamily residential developments, along with some single family and townhome units. This is reporting an average vehicle ownership of 1.28 cars per unit, which is typically much less than what you see in the other more suburban suburban areas of Old Town. So kind of as you move across the chart to the right, gets into more suburban areas of town. And you can see how the parking ratio, or not the parking ratio, but the vehicle ownership ratio changes as you move to the right. Next slide, please. So this slide, similar to the previous slide, includes data from from the entire Old Town area and is specific to vehicle ownership per unit and owner occupied units. So you can see here, on average, almost 50% of the units only report having one vehicle. Based on the average number of vehicles for owner occupied units in Old Town, it averages out to about 1.6 vehicles per unit. Next slide, please. So similarly, this is comparable data, but it is specific to renter occupied units. And you can see the difference here. The one one vehicle ownership goes up to 50, almost 58% here, having only one vehicle. And then even more interesting, 10% of renters in Old Town don't have a vehicle at all. Based on this data, the average number of vehicles for renter renter occupied units in Old Town is only about 1.25 per unit. And and all this data on this slide and the previous two, the source for the data is the the United States, United States Census. Next slide, please. So as we move along with these slides, the next few are going to be hotel specific information. This slide is simply noting some comparisons to the other Valley cities that we've been looking at as a reference point. So nine out of 10 Valley cities have a lower requirement for hotels than Scottsdale. Three Valley cities don't require any parking for hotels in their downtown area. The average parking requirement per room of all the cities we looked at is 1.1 space per room, the highest being 1.3 spaces per room. That was Avondale. And then the lowest being 0.3 spaces per room. And then further, a couple have no parking in their downtown area, no parking requirement. And then it's noted that all these all these ratios shown here do include employee parking. Next slide, please. So this slide highlights the increase in popularity of rideshare services like Uber and Lyft. These services have continued to grow year over year with 10 times as many trips in 2019 as there were in 2016. And as has been previously stated, these services have substantial impacts on parking needs for hotels. The data on this chart goes through 2019. Numbers that we have for the early months of 2020 show these services continuing to grow. And then there's a steep drop off in April of 2020 due to COVID. However, the more recent numbers that we see for the fourth quarter of 2020 and the first quarter of 2021 are showing that these services are reaching back to pre-pre pandemic levels. And next slide, please. So this slide shows some parking demand estimates for hotels, including data specific to Scottsdale, nationwide data, and then some industry estimates. All three of these numbers are per room estimates and include employee parking within that demand. The Scottsdale specific data on the left is based on data collection from three Old Town Scottsdale hotels that was collected during peak season. So those the numbers there are per room ratios based on data collection and estimates. Next slide, please. And here's more specific data for those three hotels in Old Town and the peak demand ratio associated with those hotels. So the data for hotels A and B was collected in March of 2018. And then Hotel C was collected in February of 2020. For for reference, most of the recent Old Town hotels that have been approved by the city council over the last two to three years have been approved near a ratio of 0.8 spaces per unit. So the ratio proposed in the current draft of one space per room is relatively conservative and considers a complexity, considers the complexity of hotel parking demand. It's important to note, there's several variables that affect parking demand for hotels. And the more the more services a hotel provides, the more complex it can get. In many cases, the demand for different uses peaks at different times of the day. So it's usually not as simple as adding up the peak parking demands for employees in each use that may be added to the site. For example, off-peak demands, you know, typically the peak demand for rooms is during the overnight hours, maybe from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And then opposed to maybe some restaurant and lounge space, having a peak demand of maybe around 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And then typically, the the highest demand for employees associated with a hotel is during the daytime when they're when they're doing change outs and cleaning of rooms and things like that. So it's kind of an example of how the how those ratios can work together and and parking can be shared on the site, which is why you tend to see some of these lower ratios that seem seem a bit lower than than what you might expect. Next slide, please. So moving into some background information for multifamily residential, this slide shows the average parking rates for multifamily residential of the 11 Valley cities that we looked into. As I mentioned in one of the earlier slides, most of the Valley cities have separate requirements for their Old Town areas or their their downtown areas and their non-downtown areas. So the first bullet shows the average of the requirements for non-downtown areas. And the second bullet shows the average of downtown area requirements for those other cities. I'll note that three of the Valley cities do not have any parking requirements in their downtown core. So these these averages reflect those that do not have the required parking. Then the third bullet listed there is the average guest parking ratio. As you already know, we benchmarked against those other cities. Four out of the 10 do not have a separate guest parking requirement. Four out of the seven that do have a guest parking requirement have a rate of one per 10 units. There's three Valley cities that have a higher requirement for guest parking. And the average requirement is right at that 1.63 ratio shown on the screen there. And that excludes those that don't have a requirement at all. Next slide, please. So this slide shows national demand estimates based on the ITE Parking Generation Manual. This data is collected nationally through actual parking counts at existing developments and is intended to capture peak parking demands. The manual breaks out multifamily residential into different groups based on the type of setting, being in downtown cores, mixed use urban settings and general suburban settings. These numbers are averaged out to a per unit ratio. And this is this is national data, not Scottsdale specific, but it gives a general reference point and illustrates the differences that you may expect to see between urban and suburban settings. The staff recommended ratio for multifamily in the text amendment averages out to about 1.65 spaces per unit, which is slightly higher than the suburban dan demand estimate that's shown here. Next slide, please. So when when evaluating the options and ratios for the proposed changes to multifamily residential, staff looked at three recently constructed projects and three recently approved projects in the Old Town to measure the impacts that the proposed changes may have on the actual number of spaces that would need to be constructed as a result of each ratio. Also recognizing that more spaces will translate into increased construction costs that are typically passed on to the end user. So this, looking at these these six projects, was able to give us a a real world Scottsdale specific sampling of unit counts and bedroom counts for application of the standards. So on the screen here shows for example ratios with the associated impacts on the required number of spaces compared to the existing requirements in Old Town. So on the top left outlined with the green box is the ratio that's currently proposed in the draft, which matches the existing requirement outside of Old Town and adds a guest parking requirement of one space for each eight units. This ratio, as stated previously, would result in an average 16% increase in the number of spaces required. Then if you move over to the top right, is the same ratio per bed is is on the top left, but with a guest parking requirement of one per five units instead of one per eight. So you could see with that adjustment, results in an increase of approximately 20%. On the bottom left is very close to the existing ratio that currently applies in the Old Town area, but increases the one bedroom units from one space to 1.5 spaces per unit and adds a guest parking requirement of one space per eight units. This results in an average increase of 28%. Then lastly, on the bottom right, is the same ratio as the bottom left, but changing the guest parking requirement from one per eight units to one per four units. This ratio is also the closest to the ratio that was called for in the citizen petition that was submitted and would result in an average increase in the required parking of about 38%. Next slide, please. So this slide looks more specifically at one of the developments that was included in the average calculations on the previous slide, which is the Kimzie. The Kimzie is fresh in everyone's mind since it was reviewed and approved by the council recently. And the Kimzie includes 190 dwelling units and 300 and parking, 314 parking spaces are provided for those residential units. That included 41 spaces that will be available for guest parking. So the below summary shows how those ratios on the previous slides would impact the parking requirements for the Kimzie development. So starting with what the current code requires would have been 247 spaces. So the Kimzie exceeded that by 40 spaces. Then if you move to option A, would have required 297. And Kimzie exceeded that by 17. And then option B, 311 spaces would have been required. And that's closest to what the Kimzie actually provided, exceeding that by three spaces. And then when you get into option C and D, you can see those associated requirements. And then Kimzie would have been deficient by 17 spaces with the ratio in option C and deficient by 34 spaces for the ratio in option B. Next slide, please. So now kind of getting into the specifics of the request. Similar to last time, adoption of ordinance 4500 approving the text amendment to amend the parking requirements. And we have the same six topics that we looked at last time for travel accommodations, multifamily residential, office, specific to call centers, the downtown overlay waivers, in lieu parking and special improvement requirements. So as as we kind of move through the rest of the presentation, these different sections have been broken up to allow for discussion on each one separately. And depending on where the council would like to go with it, possibly taking action on some portions and not taking actions on on others. So I'm going to briefly go through and kind of summarize the changes that are associated with each of the sections and kind of keying in more on on changes that were made from the last time and just hitting some key points on it, understanding that we've already gone through a lot of these before. And then we can, if the council has questions or would like to discuss any particular section further, we could circle back to to each one of those sections as needed. Next slide. So the first one being travel accommodations. So same as before, the proposal is to reduce the per room requirement from 1.25 to one per room. Also adding a performance requirement on parking master plans to address employee parking. So understanding that the 1.0 per room does account for employee parking. And then there's additional requirements associated with ancillary uses, such as, you know, restaurants, conference spaces and meeting facilities. The the performance requirement for parking master plans would be a large part of it would be to specifically address employee parking that that would be included as part of those if they're trying to go lower than one space per room. So the ordinance requires that the parking master plan specifically include include provisions for the employee parking and all that required parking be provided onsite for employees. And the parking master plan is a great tool for staff to be able to use in in evaluation of the specific demands for each hotel, acknowledging that the the requirements for these hotels can get pretty complex. And and when they're adding in accessory uses in addition to the rooms, having a having a parking model specific for each type of hotel setup can be very valuable. And then based on the previous changes mentioned, the administrative reduction for parking would go down from 20% to 10% based on the current draft. So anything beyond a 10% reduction would be subject to city council review and approval. So the last bullet there, as previously proposed, clarification of the requirements associated with those ancillary spaces and including the exemption for the first 5,000 square feet. And if we go to the next slide. So with regard to that exemption, you know, based on the previous discussion, some council members expressed 5,000 square feet might be too much for that exemption. So there's a few other options here, 2,500, 1,500, or or some other amount as we kind of work through this. Next slide. So number two, the multifamily residential. So as proposed, the only change to requirements outside of downtown would be to add that guest parking ratio, which is currently proposed at one space per eight units. And then within the Old Town area, adjusting those requirements to match the ratio outside of the Old Town area as well as adding the guest parking requirement of one space per eight units. Next slide. And then for just for potential later discussion, option A, B, C and D here, which are the same ratios that that we previously looked at on the earlier slides. Next slide. For office, as before, adding a new category for a call center type of office, which would be increasing that requirement from one space per 300, as it's required today, to one space per 200 square feet. Next slide. And the downtown overlay, which currently allows the 2,000 square foot exemption for commercial and the waiver for for dwelling units. That's proposed to be reduced to 1,000 square feet for the commercial waiver and one dwelling unit for the residential waiver. And as previously mentioned, the requirement for onsite spaces is new to this draft, requiring at least one space existing onsite in order to utilize that non-residential waiver and then two spaces existing onsite if you're going to use the residential waiver. Next slide. Number five, in lieu parking. So this would eliminate the option to purchase new in lieu spaces, leaving leasing as an option. And then implying the or applying the maximum property size requirement of 20,000 square feet, not allowing anyone with a property over 20,000 square feet to utilize the in lieu parking program. Next slide. So lastly, the special improvement requirements. So this would be applicable to developments that are constructing public parking as part of a private development. And it is only associated with dispersment of any bonus funds that may be associated with these zoning approval. And it essentially, this change would be providing more credit, being 100% for the cost of above ground structures that have enhanced design that that would be integrating the structure with the building as opposed to currently, the code only allows 25% of the cost to be credited for that construction. Next slide. So so that concludes the staff's overview. As I mentioned, we're happy to go back to any of the previous sections to to have additional discussion as needed. Thank you very much.
Excellent, Mr. Cluff. Really appreciate the overview and the detail. At this point, we will move to public comment. Each speaker will be queued up by staff. You do have three minutes. You'll hear two bells. If you could keep your comments closer to two, that would be appreciated. But I will turn it over to staff before we go on to our council questions. So let's go to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Ortega and members of the city council.
Thank you, Mayor Ortega and members of the city council. This is Shane Stone from the city manager's office. Our first public comment will be coming from Dr. Kurtley to be followed up um with comment from Ms. Atkinson. Dr. Kurtley, you should now be able to press star six on your device and begin your public comment. And Dr. Kurtley, it looks like you are still muted. Um, we are not able to hear you if you're speaking. Oh, there we go. Um, you should be able to begin your public comment now. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Sunny Kurtley and I'm speaking as a member of the COGS Coalition Greater Scottsdale Board of Directors. Our address is on file. You know, it's a well-known fact that our downtown area is a major revenue generator and it is an embarrassment that tonight this city council ignore their experienced new development parking recommendations. These are the men and women who have vested not only hard-earned dollars, but thousands of hours to make this downtown a tourist attraction. For many years, they have shouted in a single voice of a serious cannibalization of customer and public street parking. The negative impact of no available customer parking is a result of former city councils approving hotels, apartments and condos that did not provide enough parking spaces on their property for their tenants, employees or guests. 16 months ago, they submitted a petition signed by 130-plus merchants and property owners asking for city council action, not until pushed two months ago with this agendized by the new 2021 city council. Tonight, this council will suggest doing absolutely nothing to update the current parking code in the downtown area for six months. Does this mean they will also put a six-month moratorium on approving any new downtown project until the new downtown parking requirements are determined? So what will be the game plan? During this six months, they will focus on managing current parking rather than denying underparked new development. One way will be using taxpayer money for a 10-minute interval trolley to transport employees from vacant and public private lots to their businesses. Now, this was tried before and it was very unsuccessful. The Galleria used shuttles at their own expense, parking employees at Civic Center Library Lot in La Loma Curve area, but the other employees still parked on Sixth Avenue, Sixth Avenue and St. and Public Street in customer spaces as well as our Third Avenue. Additionally, they're talking about the request for downtown hotels to comply with existing ordinance that parks. They have to park the property free. However, it's reported that our planning department says that this is not legal to enforce on private property. So here we are, after years of the same parking issues, they have to wait another six months for what? Now, to end on a good council decision, at least some out-of-town consultant isn't getting paid several hundred thousand dollars to tell the city what the business owners have been telling us for years. Thank you.
And our next public comment will be coming from Ms. Atkinson to be followed uh by Mr. Thompson. Ms. Atkinson, you should now be able to press star six on your device and begin your public comment.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. Atkinson.
Okay, hello, Mayor and Council. First point I want to make is we, I oversaw the circulation and collection of signatures from downtown businesses. We allowed one signature per business. So we're talking about 133 businesses. If you want to count in at least one pu- uh employee for each one of these, then we would be up to 26600. I agree with Sunny. I also agree that the parking code uh should have at least 1.3 spaces for one bedroom and studio, two for two-bedroom, guest parking, one space for five units. I, and the hotels, uh, they should have one key for each room. The, as the parking requirements, the 5,000 square foot waiver should be reduced to 1,500. The one thing I noticed when everybody was talking, and that is they kept saying, "Free parking for workers." They said parking for workers, but not free parking for workers. And that has to be put in there. I think it's very important at this juncture that the city either hold off approving any more developments before, if they are going to put this on a six-month journey. We have tried the shuttle in the past and it didn't work. A lot of these women, especially in the restaurants, are late at night. It is dangerous. They do not want to be standing there waiting for somebody to take them to a vacant lot. It's my hope that this council will not leave us out. If it's good enough for the rest of the city, it's good enough for us. We hope that you will find it in your wisdom to go ahead and to approve this. Any good, quality, well-financed development will want this type of parking that the Kimzie put, came forward with. They came forward because they knew it was a necessity for their guest. So, a first-class quality development will also know it's good for their business. And it's good for the merchants. The merchants have been drug through so much over the years and looked down on that it's time to stand up and say, "Yes, we support small businesses." Thank you.
And our next public comment will be coming from Mr. Thompson to be followed by Ms. Co. Mr. Thompson, please press star six on your device and begin your public comment.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, first off, I'd like to request that you open your meetings to the public as soon as possible. My name is French Thompson and my address is on record. In February of 2020, 130 people signed a petition asking the city council to increase the parking requirements for new developments. Just a reminder, this is now 15 months later. This is already a defective parking code. So the petition never asked anybody to fix the existing parking issues. It did not ask to have the Galleria's parking garage open up to free parking for the building's employees. It did not ask that recently-built developments stop charging for parking that according to ordinance is free. It never asked for an increase of public parking structures. It only asked for one thing, an increase of the parking code to have the new developments be self-parked. I'm going to repeat that. It only asked to have these developments self-parked. It never said anything about employees on the businesses that are parking on the streets. It didn't make any comments about empty or full parking garages, public parking garages. It didn't speak of any other existing parking issues. It was signed by people who experience these parking problems each and every day. It was not signed by developers. It was not signed by real estate salespeople, and it was not signed by anybody who would be profiting from these developments. These are all your small business people who are the heart of the business community in the Scottsdale Arts District in Old Town. They are all putting their faith in the city council to do the right thing and require new development to be self-parked. These numbers were not made up and they are not going to cause any development to be overparked regardless of what the people who plan on profiting from the developments say. These people that sign this petition are not anti-development. In fact, they're pro-quality development. Quality development provides enough amenities to be attracted to people who might want to live there. They do not require residents and their guests to park on the street or in public parking structures. I know that there are many on the city council that want to change the narrative and that there's now apparently a list of names of developers and real estate agents and stuff that was submitted by, hopefully submitted for public view by pro-development people who do not want these developments to be self-parked. Please consider who these people are and what is their relationship to profiting on these developments. I can only say, please change the parking requirements to those numbers in the petition and do not cause more overflow parking in Old Town. I also want to ask you, if you want this to be the legacy of your time in office, to slowly, bit by bit, cause more and more overflow parking in Old Town and strangle the existing small businesses. In Tempe, they have a no-car developments called, called the SAC Tempe. There's 761 apartments and they are putting in a no-car development, 150 guest parking places, which is a ratio of one to five. This development is right next to light rail. They're still putting in one-to-five ratio for guests. I ask you to consider what you're doing tonight because the people and the citizens of watching. Thank you.
And our next public comment will be coming from Ms. Co. to be followed up by Mr. Pejman. Ms. Co., you should now be able to press star six on your device and begin your public comment. Ms. Co., it looks like you are still muted. Um, if you pressed star six on your device, you should be able to, there we go.
I just got unmuted. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Lori Co. I live at 9214 East Wood Drive, Scottsdale. Tonight's presentation by the city staff was uh pretty wonky for me. Uh, I don't know a lot about these details, but I can say that I feel a certain degree of anger and frustration uh if I were to describe uh how I feel about uh the things that, that we talk about growth and parking in Scottsdale. We aren't Avondale, we're not Mesa, and we're not any other city in the valley. We are a world-class uh resort town. And some of the, this idea that we should compare ourselves to these regular suburban cities is just, is frightening. I have been led to believe that there are those on the council right now that would support increasing parking for guests all over the, the city except for in, in downtown. I know that there is an idea that Scottsdale is divided by north and south, but that's a myth that's being perpetrated. And it is very nefarious. We're all stakeholders who believe that Old Town should be included in this guest parking. And as a matter of fact, that Old Town should have what it needs for parking, whatever that might be. All of my life, I've believed that representative government was by and for the people. The citizens of Scottsdale clearly voted to stop high-rise buildings and density in Old Town. We shouldn't have to choose to do our shopping, dining and overall enjoyment away from Old Town because it doesn't have enough parking. To be honest, it sure feels like a targeted strategy to undermine the beautiful Old Town district. Bob Pejman has done extensive research on this parking issue and it's difficult for me to understand why his work has been so disrespected. We need more parking in Old Town. The exceptionalism of Scottsdale is that it is a small city with a small-town feeling. Why on earth would we choose to increase parking everywhere else but in our historic arts district? Tonight, I am asking you to include Old Town in this change to citywide parking codes. Data is great, but reality is better. Thank you.
Our next public comment will be coming from Mr. Pejman to be followed by Ms. Wilson. Mr. Pejman, you should be able to press star six on your device now and begin your public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Ortega, council members. My name is Bob Pejman. Address is on the record. So, the citizen parking petition that the stakeholders filed 16 months ago, it primarily requested that new developments be self-parked. And I repeat that, new developments be self-parked, meaning that they won't overflow to street and public garages. Now, the people who are against this proactive and reasonable initiative, they like to muddy the water and change the conversation from self-parking new developments to managing public parking. For example, how to encourage higher use of public garages, et cetera. And that's a valid effort by, and by all means, it should be pursued. But whether a store, a store employee, for example, parks in a public garage is a completely different issue than how many spaces a one- or two-bedroom unit of a new development should have and how many guest spaces it should provide for X number of units. It's a whole different topic. So about a month ago, staff provided 10 comparable valley cities. And Scottsdale is one of the very few that doesn't have any guest parking requirements while, while most of them do. And it's also one of the very few that only requires one space for one bedroom. In the 10 valley cities, once you eliminate the transit-oriented urban areas, and that's the piece that in Brian Clough's presentation, he refers to downtowns that don't require this or that. But you got, you, you have to eliminate parts of Mesa and Tempe and Phoenix that are next to light rail. Once you do that, the averages are for the 10 valley cities, 1.4 space for one bedroom, 1.9 space for a two-bedroom, and one guest space for four and a half units. So I hope that we can get close and above the valley averages because we're better than an average, uh, average city. And um, it's also imperative that guest spaces for staff and planning commission recommendations are provided outside gates and easily accessed. Otherwise, they will sit empty while the guests park on the street. The Kimzie can be used as a gate, as, as a great case study. It proactively supplied 26% spaces over our code with a guest parking ratio of one for 4.6 spaces. Why would our code require anything less than the Kimzie did? But if we don't codify this, not all developers will go over our deficient code. On the hotel front, the big issue is that there's a 5,000 square foot exemption. Most downtown hotels uh only have about 5,000 square foot for dining and conference use. So are we effectively exempting most of it? A more reasonable exemption is 1,500 square feet. But none of this matters if the non-hotel guests who don't have room keys can't get beyond the gates to park. Think about a conference attended by 50 realtors who drive in and park all day. For this reason alone, the dining and conference spaces should be located outside the parking gate for easy access, same as the guest spaces in multifamily. Otherwise, those people will park on the street while their spaces sit empty behind the gate. And these are my comments. Thank you.
Our next public comment will be coming from Ms. Wilson to be followed by Ms. Austin. Ms. Wilson, please press star six on your device and begin your public comment.
Hi, um, Mayor Ortega and City Council. My name is Janet Wilson and my address is on record. I have been a property owner for many years in downtown Scottsdale and I continually hear about par- parking problems from my tenants. I was astonished to hear at the last council meeting that there isn't a parking problem in downtown Scottsdale. Tell that to my tenants. I have lost tenants because of the parking problem. On the Kimzie project, you said you listened to the petition signers and okayed that project. It's time you do the same for the 133 petition signers that are merchants and landlords who are there every day and know there is a huge problem with parking in the downtown. I would also ask that the 5,000 square foot waiver for commercial use be changed to 1,500 square feet. We have the restaurant Evo on the corner of Fifth Avenue and Goldwater. It's 4,300 square feet. Think of all the parking that restaurant needs. Why should the hotel get a waiver and Evo has to have parking to code? A hotel easily can put in six or seven retail shops in that square footage, 5,000. Is it fair to the other retailers on the block to have uh parking, uh, have parking for their shops? And then there is the problem of con- conventions and meetings, et cetera. The parking should also be available outside the parking gate and easily accessible to non-hotel guests without keys. At a recent council ma- meeting, it was stated that we have so many vacancies in downtown Scottsdale, implying the downtown is signed, but we need to make it easier for the developers to build their huge projects to get, again, implying we shouldn't overburden the developers making it hard to park their projects. As a landlord, I have never gone this As a landlord, I have never gone this long without a vacancy. I would say if there is a vacancy in our wonderful downtown, it just might be that landlord's fault. In closing, we are not against the developers, but it's just common sense if we have a parking problem now. We will certainly have an even greater parking need in the future when apartments and hotels, et cetera, are developed who don't require enough parking for the project. I still don't understand how the staff can use data from other Valley Cities to justify our parking needs. We have events like Barrett-Jackson, et cetera, and a huge influx of tourists in the winter months. No other Valley City compares. We are unique. Thank you.
Our next public comment will be coming from Ms. Austin. Ms. Austin, please press star six on your device and begin your public comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Ortega and City Council and staff. My name is Emily Austin. I live in Scottsdale, and my address is on file. First of all, I just want to say I agree with all of the people who've been making comments. I have been speaking to them often. They're very passionate, and you should listen to them. So after all of the outreach and countless people chiming in about issues with parking and the need for more parking in downtown, we're afraid our voices are being ignored. Again, you know, the Kinsey project was just passed, and a few city council members partially based their decision on the support from those who signed the online petition in favor of the Kinsey. And also, that petition was a little bit of a joke. Like, there was one woman, and she just signed her name three times. That was it. I mean, the way there were sticklers with petitions, please. So, I'm sorry. I lost my train of thought here. So why isn't that the case with 130 shop, gallery, and property owners in Old Town who signed the petition for more parking? Why are they being ignored? I don't get it. And speaking of petitions, I took a closer look at the online petition in favor of the Kinsey. Many of the signers were realtors, builders, investors, loan agents, architects, a lot of shop owners, and many of them leased from Carter-Unger on Fifth Avenue. I think even had some on Stetson. And would you feel awkward if your landlord asked you to sign a petition? I personally know someone who was in constant fear of losing her lease. And, you know, you think she's going to say, "No, I won't sign"? Don't think so. So, commercial realtor Larry Kush boasted that Mr. Unger heads up a coalition of 65 downtown business owners to stop the anti-growthers. And I'm sick and tired of the development community, the shills, and those who profit from it calling those of us who do not want to see overly tall and dense projects as anti-growth. That's just not true. I liked the Kinsey. I just thought it was too tall. Still do. So I wonder if the people who signed the petition that, you know, saying that they wanted the Kinsey, I wonder if they also want to sign a petition saying they want more business, they want people to come to their establishments, but they don't want more parking. No more parking in Old Town. It'll be interesting to see. So this bothers me, how, you know, how accurate these signatures really were. And I also just wonder, how can city staff make recommendations when they don't even know how many people live in an apartment building with cars? And with the cost of housing in Old Town, people will have more roommates to make the rent, and therefore, there will be more demand for parking. I'm almost done. A moratorium on approving more projects must be put in place until the parking issue is resolved. Otherwise, it will be too late. It's better to have too much parking than too little. And to conclude, I would just like to quote the owners of the Marshall Gallery. I just read an email, and they wrote, "Certainly, the comfort of downtown residents and an accommodating business environment for visitors deserve intelligent consideration and foresight on the part of our civic leaders." Thank you, and please open the key bap. We've been sitting here for hours waiting to talk. Thank you.
Mayor Ortega, members of the city council, that concludes public comment on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I will close public comment. At this point, I just want to point out that the May 4 meeting was very useful. It brought out many specifics from council members. And over the subsequent 10, 14 days, these comments, many of which were made publicly on May 4 amongst us, are now highlighted and shown in the posted agenda item. So this is a very useful way of exhibiting what, as many thoughts and possible amendments came forth. Before, and I would just ask to hold back on any motion at this point, just, we will get this done tonight, but I'm just asking if you have any question or need a clarification of staff. And I see Councilmember Durham may have, if you have a question rather than a motion, so we can get through any questions first.
No.
Thank you, Mayor. No, it's not a question.
Okay.
It's in the form of a motion.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Janik, again, if you have any question in particular, I appreciate it.
I have a particular question. When you grabbed all this data, did you eliminate any of the multifamily units or hotels that charge for parking? Or you didn't even check that parameter?
Mayor Ortega, Vice Mayor Janik, we did not exclude them because we were not aware of which ones are charging for parking. We know that some are, and we're in the process of enforcing that, but we don't have a list of which ones are actively charging. Thank you.
And that's also true with your multifamily residences? Or are we assuming that, you know, when you did your comparisons with different towns, did you eliminate anybody that was charging for parking on multifamily residences?
Vice Mayor Janik, most of the other communities that are comparable are actively charging for parking in their downtown areas. So whether it's metered parking or parking garages, so, no, we did not exclude them. I'm sorry.
Okay. And obviously, that is going to skew the data because one of the biggest things, one of the biggest items that stops people from parking in a particular place is when they have to pay. So if it were free, one would assume that the numbers might be reflective of higher use of the parking rather than lower use. Thank you.
Councilwoman Whitehead, and then Councilmember Durham.
Could staff put the graph on the screen that shows, that had average Scottsdale parking? So it had rental, maybe it was two graphs, but it had showed the rate at which our residents, our car owners, both rental and owners, I think.
Ellie, this is Brian. I think it would be slide eight, slide seven and eight, probably. Thank you.
There was, yeah, that's true. There was one that-
Was there one other one?
That had an actual number, had an actual, because it was downtown core, and we show for a rental, we show that our average residents have 1.1 car. Oh, that's actually, okay, so that's a good one because that's vehicle ownership per unit includes rentals and owners. Is that correct?
Mayor Ortega and Councilmember Whitehead, that's correct.
Okay, that's a great graphic because that is Scottsdale data, and so that's what I was basing a lot on. So that's, thank you so much.
Councilmember Durham, a question?
Thank you, Mayor. In reference to Vice Mayor Janik's question, at least on the hotel parking issue, my understanding was that data that was presented came partly from the W, which is currently charging for parking, and I imagine has charged for parking in the past. So there is possibly a problem with that data on the hotel parking. That problem doesn't concern me terribly because I think on the hotels, we're going to use a master plan system, which will be flexible in order to take in the actual parking ratios, and will have sufficient flexibility to adjust for the fact that they're currently or have been charging. I hope they're going to stop with the enforcement letters went out, but I think we've added sufficient flexibility to the hotel to take care of that issue.
Councilwoman Caputi, question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have a couple of questions for legal, if that's okay. I keep hearing these comments from residents, like we had a couple just now on the people who called in about that we should stop all future development until we get a handle on our parking. I'm under the impression that the Supreme Court ruled that a moratorium on private development by a city is illegal. Is that right?
Mayor and Councilwoman Caputi, that's right. There would be a lot of legal impediments to simply declaring a moratorium on approving any future development.
I just want to have that clear on the record, that that's not really an option. And then my other question for legal is, I was reading that the governor, Governor Ducey, just signed SB 1409 into law last Tuesday, and it sounds like that's going to require cities and towns to consider cost when adopting a zoning ordinance or text amendment that impacts the cost of housing for sale or rent. I just wondered if that's going to have any impact on what we're about to do tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilwoman Caputi. Yes, that law has not been enacted, but it has been signed. It will go into effect 90 days after the council, I'm sorry, after the legislative session comes to a close. So when that law does go into effect, it will be something that will likely change the way your council reports will look, and we will be addressing that with the planning staff. I think we have started addressing that with the planning staff already. I'd like to think that the city council and the city staff already considers the ultimate cost of any regulation that we impose. So I don't think it will require a wild change by our city council, but it will be something that you'll probably see noted on your council report, some of the items that this new law will want us to take a look at.
Because requiring extra parking will absolutely, obviously, be a cost on future investment, right?
Absolutely. More parking spaces means more costs, and it's something that this council should consider.
Thank you.
You know, at this point, also, just to mention the separation between enforcement issues and certainly compliance issues, time of day, and that aspect is a separate administrative area, whereas we're looking at essentially new build and when a property changes use substantially. What I'd like to do, if council will bear with me, I don't see any other questions or requests for clarification. I would like to suggest that, and we will get this done tonight, that we work from a motion to approve the ordinance with a second, and then just go page by page, page one through 20, and act on any amendment of any issue. So by doing so, I know we're coming from six or seven different directions, but I'm just trying to keep score and keep everything pretty much on tab. For instance, I would suggest, you know, if we were to start with this purpose, you know, on page one, it explains where the highlights were and where the new comments originate from. By doing so, then we won't be so scattered, and, you know, we will be able to check off our particular interests. Remember that what was posted is what came from council members through May 4 and meetings with staff when they tried to clarify those particular issues, whether it's a certain count per bedroom or guest room, excuse me, guest parking. It's just a suggestion so I can keep tabs of everything in a methodical way, and if something is accepted, it wouldn't need to be an amendment, but we could vote on it as accepted as any of these terms that have, there are basically some push points in the entire action that we're doing. So do you have generally response to that, Councilmember Durham, as a method to get through this in an expeditious way? So we're always looking at the same article, is what I want to say.
I would have an alternative suggestion, Mr. Mayor, which is that on pages five and six of the staff report, there is what I think is a pretty succinct statement of the various items, which I think hits the main points, or at least the points where we would be likely to disagree. And so rather than going through the entire ordinance, I think it might be easier to go through pages five and six.
I think we could hold those as, you know, again, but if we see where they're actually placed, then we know exactly how the staff can respond to those specific items. That's why I'm suggesting that we do it this way rather than cross-reference the narrative if we can just specifically look to that particular one. For instance, they're indexed, the one pertaining to the Galleria on parking 1 per 200. It's a specific page. We could look at it, agree to it or not, and be very much together. If you'd like to attempt it the other way, that's true. There may be some gaps, though, in trying to relate to where we're going.
Well, I think that all the suggestions I would make, we can identify them on page five or six, and do it that way.
Okay, that's fine. I am going to reference, however, within the log here on how that is because what's happening is I've also referenced the pages, and it's highlighted in the ordinance itself, so we can cross-check that. And then we know that it's covered, and we can give staff good direction on each of those. Or, not or, then we can also vote as a group on each specific one as we go, and it will be reflected in the ordinance itself. So I think we've got the same goal, just to try to stay on the same page, and I would join with you, looking at page five and six as a base, if that's useful. Does that make sense? Councilwoman Whitehead, do you have a?
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest, is I think if we look at each category, staff's very adept at getting to the spot in the ordinance that we're referring to. So I think what we need to do is look at the travel accommodations and kind of have consensus there, multifamily residential outside of Old Town. So 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and do it that way. That would make it, I think, a far better conversation.
I definitely like that suggestion. What I'm going to do is pull it out so I have it to cross-reference as I'm going through, and then I can check them off to see that we're covered and that where an amendment is needed, or, excuse me, where consensus is needed, I will take it as a motion or an amendment to what's written already in the highlighted. Then we can vote on each of them as we go and get through it. So at this point, if you wish to lead- So at this point, if you wish to lead off with that as a discussion point, I will look at page five on travel accommodations and hotels and begin that discussion, and I'll make a reference to it as we come through the sheet itself, so we can checkbox it that it's covered or how it's covered.
Before we started working through this, would it be appropriate to make a few comments in response to the people who had called in, in addition, in reference to the people we've heard from over the last two weeks?
Actually, at this point, we have no motion on the table, so certainly if you'd like to respond or discuss that, that's fine.
Yes, I would like to make a few comments about what we've heard in the last two weeks and how I think we ought to be approaching this. We have heard from many, many people over the last two weeks. There are strong feelings on both sides. We have received a petition from a large number of people supporting the code as it is today. In fact, I think that petition was bigger than the petition of the people who want to increase the parking. So if we're going to fight this out by petitions, the people supporting the current code have a bigger petition. But of course, I don't think that's the way we should approach this. We fully understand the cost of parking. Nobody should have any doubts about that. We understand the cost of parking, and someone suggested that we should overpark, and we definitely don't want to overpark, because that is money which can go towards beautifying a project, improving the project, making the project better. So we don't want that money to go overparking, but we also want to require that a project is adequately parked. And that's a very fine line, one which is probably impossible to attain. But over the last two weeks, I have not really discovered, because I was always already aware of this, I think that there are important structural issues in our parking which need to be addressed, such as the poor utilization of garages and the failure to provide free parking as required by the code. We have underutilized garages, we have underutilized private garages, which are going unused, and if we could figure out a way to do some kind of a public-private partnership with that, we could solve part of our problem. Signage is another area that needs to be improved. As Vice Mayor Janik has indicated, our tourist maps often don't indicate the location of parking garages on our maps. So if you're some poor tourist trying to find a parking garage, you know, God help you if you've got a map and are trying to find a place to park, because the map isn't going to help you. Now, we've talked to the staff extensively over the last couple of weeks. We've made these suggestions to improve our situation, and maybe some of them will work, maybe some of them won't work. But we think that we should try to take some action on some of these things we've suggested to staff, and that we should come back in six months, revisit any progress that have made on those issues, and then look at this issue again, because it's really important that we get it right. One of the things that I came across when I was studying this issue is that the Walker 2015 Parking Report stated that there are three essential elements to parking. One of them is inexpensive parking, one of them is convenient parking, and one of them is sufficient parking. And the report says you can have two of those three, you can't have all three. And we've chosen to have inexpensive parking, which basically means free parking. And so that means necessarily our parking is going to either be insufficient or inconvenient. And I think we've tacitly chosen to make it sufficient but inconvenient, since much of it is located in garages that people don't want to use, or is possibly too far away, or is just hard to get to. So you're never going to get all three. The people who want sufficient parking, convenient parking, and free parking, sorry to tell you, you're not going to get it. You're not going to get all three. So that's policy choice for us here and for the people of the city. So although I'm asking, some of the commentators mentioned we are asking for a six-month study while we make some improvements and look farther down the road for what other improvements we can make. But that does not mean we are kicking the can down the road. We're going to expect action from staff on the things we've discussed with them, and we are going to take steps, I hope we're going to take steps tonight, to improve the situation. In the meantime, we are not going to pass any projects, or at least I'm not going to pass any, which are underparked. Many people have pointed to the Kimsey and said, you know, "Look at the Kimsey, it has very sufficient parking." And there are several other projects that have sufficient parking. And frankly, I think that's the way that many projects are going to go. So the possibility that some project is going to come forward, which is based strictly on the code, I really don't think that's going to happen, and if it does happen, it's probably not going to get through the council. So our idea is to make certain changes to the text amendments that's put forward, and we will work through those with the mayor and make our changes as they come up. But that's our take on this, or at least that of me and Councilmember Whitehead and I think Councilmember Janik. We want to try to make some improvements, because some people have suggested that underutilized garages are somehow separate from multifamily housing. And none of these problems are separate from each other. If we have underutilized garages, that means we have cars on the street. And if we have other assets that are not being used, that are putting more cars on the street, that's a problem. And the multifamily housing, as people have suggested tonight, if they're not adequately parked, those are going to put cars on the street. So it all comes out to the same place, which is more cars on the street. And if we can attack some of these problems and fix some of them, we'll have less cars on the street and less to worry about. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I will now make an attempt to follow the outline, which is page five, travel accommodations, hotels, and the reference is page 13. So page 13 is covering the items that are shown as travel accommodation hotels. The bullet points are, lower the base room requirement from 1.25 to 1.1. That's shown under travel accommodations on page 13. The next one has to do with whether, is to clarify the requirements for restaurant and conference and other associated commercial spaces. That's covered by putting some square footage and car requirements to bar lounge, and it's covered to commercial uses as well. So that's also shown on page 13. There is a question about the exception, which says that the exception is for 5,000 square feet, the first 5,000 square feet for commercial uses. I happen to disagree with that one. We've heard different numbers, but in my opinion, and I would propose to put an amendment to that, what's written here, that probably the only exception would be for 1,000 square feet inside and 1,000 square feet outside space. So that would be an amendment to what is already shown on, that corresponds with our item one on page five and page 13. I think 5,000-square-foot exception is just way too much. If they chose to use 1,000 square feet of outside space for commercial purposes, like a patio or whatever, and 1,000 inside, now if they chose to put in 4,000-square-foot banquet rooms, they'd have to provide more parking. So I would propose that as an amendment, just so that we can start to address these areas. And I would ask for a second for that. And we could discuss that. Councilwoman Whitehead?
Yeah, I want to ask staff, because hotels are tricky, and I agree. I agree 5,000 is too much. But I wonder, so there are some uses, such as if you had a small diner that's just the residence, you have a gym, you have one of those little offices, you know, there's certain common amenities in these hotels that don't service the public. What would be, how many square feet do you think that would, you know, occupy?
Mayor Ottega, Councilmember Whitehead, it's difficult to say, because the scale of the hotels is so much different one from the other. It's not unusual for a hotel to have a cafe that is 1,000 square feet, 800 to 1,000 square feet. It's not unusual for a hotel to have two meeting rooms of 200 square feet each. That is not a conference space, it's simply meeting rooms that you can reserve. It's also not unusual to have a fitness room, you know, sometimes a salon, sometimes a small boutique, retail store. So collectively, those are probably, you know, 3,000 square feet or more. And in some of the newer hotels, it is more, because they're depending more on larger restaurants and larger conference spaces.
Thank you. So Mayor, I wonder if, so part of what I like about this item is it requires a parking master plan. So I wonder, rather than, the number I kept hearing was 1,500 in 2,000. And I would like to see a slightly larger number, because this parking master plan is required, and then that's fewer times that we have an applicant perhaps asking for exceptions. It gives some more flexibility. But if that 1,500 in the parking master plan suggests to staff and then ultimately the council that these are facilities that will have a lot of local traffic, for instance, then we could adjust. Would that make sense?
And again, we're just trying to kick this off to get some methodology here. According to, again, page 13, it says other commercial uses, one parking space for every 400. So it is shown on that, and it's described. And then the exception seems to be for 5,000 square feet, which I believe Councilwoman Littlefield said 1,500 feet. Just, you know, meet them halfway, say the first 1,500 feet is okay, off the books, and then the other, if they chose to add 2,000 more square feet for other purposes, then they would be allocated at one car per 400 square feet. So they would have to have five cars for anything over 1,500 feet. I'm just trying to get to a point here where it makes sense to come to a number. The other thing that's happening is that the parking plan will address employee parking. So that's important, and that's important that it's in the ordinance so that the staff can work that out, and we don't have to work it out with the city attorney on a development agreement, right? So this actually equates it, or puts it into the planning staff's arena and the master plan. And so, you know, again, we're trying to be specific here. If we're somewhat okay with reducing the travel accommodations to one parking space for every one guest room, that's the way it's written here. If we're okay with the other listings and maybe reducing it to 1,500 feet, the first 1,500 feet are almost like standard procedure, then perhaps we could vote on page 13, which is in the ordinance, which covers everything under hotel accommodations with 1,500 feet of commercial space.
I have a question, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I wonder if staff could answer, I agree with Councilwoman Whitehead about a parking master plan, because I think that really gets to the heart of what some key differences are, whether it's an urban or suburban location, whether it's full service or limited service, whether there's event space or restaurants, and all of the things that make these properties unique. But we're also, so I think the parking master plan is a great way to approach this, but we're also putting very specific parameters on there, which is a little bit confusing to me. So perhaps staff could explain, what is the relationship or the interplay between the parking master plan and the specifics that we're putting in this section?
Mayor Ottega, Councilwoman Real Heaven, they actually both come into play. The base is one parking space per key, and then these ancillary facilities are added in. But that does give the council the ability to lower that amount, the 1.0, commensurate with how you feel the ancillary space is going to be apportioned and used. So it would still require the consideration of how much additional ancillary space is being proposed, but it does give council a good deal of flexibility in analyzing whether or not a reduction is justified.
But it seems to me it would also give investors a high level of uncertainty if we need to, if there's no, what am I trying to say? Investors prefer to have a level of certainty before they invest in developing a project, and it feels to me like this is creating a higher level of uncertainty that may be a disincentive for investment. So I don't know if that's a question or just a comment. But it seems to me that there would be more uncertainty. Mr. Grant, could you comment, perhaps?
I guess uncertainty and flexibility are kind of looking, the different ways of looking at the same thing. I do believe that building in a level of flexibility is going to make it difficult for people to do a pro forma that predicts a specific outcome. So I do agree with that, and I think most people going in on a zoning table like this would prefer to see a specific number and be able to plan for that. Thank you.
And then is this where the 10% and 20% come into play, where, right, if the parking master plan came in at 19% less than what all of these things add up to be today, that's within staff purview? Is that right?
Yes, currently it's 20%. It doesn't require that staff approve up to 20%. It does allow it. The proposal would be up to 10%. Anything over 10% would come to council automatically.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Caputo.
Okay, so I'm okay with lowering the base requirement down to one key per room. I think that we've all seen the data, and people are, of course, driving less when they're going to hotels. It seems totally appropriate to me. This conversation we're having about exempting for commercial uses, it feels very random. We're all saying 5,000 feels too much, what should be a better number? Again, I'm very uncomfortable with how we're making these decisions that are going to involve millions, tens of millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars. We're just saying, well, it feels like it should be 1,500. I mean, Mr. Grant just explained a hotel might have commercial uses for, that's a great point. If you're in a hotel, there's going to be a restaurant, a fitness center, sometimes a salon, shopping, that's easily 5,000 square feet. I don't actually think that's unrealistic. So I would just feel better if we had some more, it just feels like we're sitting up here going, what should the number be? 5,000 feels too much, 1,500 feels better. I don't know. I wish there was a little bit more direction for what would be appropriate. I don't feel that it's that inappropriate to include a 5,000 I don't feel that it's that inappropriate to include a 5,000 square foot exception. I think most people that are using hotel amenities are staying in the hotel, so that makes sense to me to exempt for that. You very rarely are going to get people coming in and using a hotel hair salon or shopping and a gift shop that aren't staying in the hotel. And then, as long as I have the mic, I just want to make one comment that I didn't get a chance to when Councilman Durham was speaking super quick. I agree strongly, Councilman, with what you said. These aren't separate issues. A lot of the people who called in were saying that, you know, they're experiencing problems with parking, but they don't want to look at any solutions that we might come up with here tonight. That seems crazy to me. We're trying to solve the problems that residents and businesses are bringing to us. We're listening to all the people, trying to come up with solutions for actual problems. And things like usage and, you know, where people park, looking at the different parts of our city, having different solutions for different areas. You can't separate, you can't say, well, we're only going to make a rule for future businesses, right? You're saying, we're private businesses, we don't have a requirement on our parking, but we're going to ask the Scottsdale government to make a rule for future businesses. It just feels very strange. We're trying to come up with solutions here tonight, and balanced solutions. So of course, we're going to look at every possible way in which we can solve the problem. That will be a win. And I agree, we're going to do it tonight. So in closing, I'm totally fine with this, the way staff has it suggested to us, especially with, as has been pointed out, the fact that we have master plan in here. I'm okay with accepting as it is. Thank you.
Councilmember Durham, and then Whitehead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the 5,000 square feet is probably too high, but I'm not terribly concerned about that because I think our one room per parking space is probably too high, and is probably going to be lowered in discussions and in the parking master plan. And I think the parking master plan is the key to this, because some hotels are going to have restaurants, some are not. Hampton Inn is going to have a little guest room. Some places are going to have bigger workout rooms. Some of them are going to have hair salons, barber shops, et cetera, et cetera. And so this has to be flexible, and I don't think it's a disincentive to investing, because I think anybody bringing forward a project knows that they're going to have to provide parking for those types of uses. So I think our staff is completely capable of handling that in a pretty expeditious way, and I don't really worry about this creating any disincentive. We have probably more so than any place in the United States. We have a huge variety, all the way from Hampton Inns up to the Princess and the Phoenician. We just have such an incredible variety of hotel accommodations that I think that this is a very good way of dealing with the wide variety of accommodations that we have.
Thank you. And I will add to that, that I believe, again, we've been referencing the Kimsey. Kimsey, if I recall, had 4,000 square feet of commercial restaurant, and they owned up to it, and they showed 11 parking spaces. So, I mean, it's undeniable that there's no real freebie in this thing, because you're going to need employees, or you're going to need, you know, staff to run your place. So actually, the 5,000 is very generous, when in fact, like the Kimsey, they just said they would have a 5,000 square foot restaurant, and they'd park it. Councilwoman Whitehead, and then Councilwoman Littlefield, and Vice Mayor Janik. Councilmember Whitehead.
Thank you so much. I'll keep it quick. Yeah, I just want to point out, so a lot of these hotels will have continuing education for various professions, so they do bring in, each hotel is quite different. I mean, there are different categories. So I think what we're saying is that we'll provide some square footage there, but every applicant can come in with a master plan. So we're adding this flexibility, we're just not giving away this rather large number right off the bat. Also, I'm really pleased we're reducing the spaces per room based on data. We've just got to work on data. So I'm all about flexibility for these hotels, since many hotels have different setups and attract local people and some only their guests. So thanks.
Councilwoman Littlefield, and then Vice Mayor Janik.
Well, I haven't said anything yet, so I think I'm going to weigh in here for a minute. I'd like to point out, the whole point of all of this is to make these things self-parking, so that people don't have to go out on the streets and cannibalize other businesses' parking in order to find a spot for their car. I also had a separate suggestion, which I'd like to make, and that is, if this, if we're really concerned that this might be something that's expensive for the businesses, and I was thinking primarily of multi-housing, but hotels also, I see in the near future that we're going to have a much bigger need for fueling stations for electric cars. So perhaps one of the things that we should be able to put into this ordinance is the allowance for hotels and multi-housing in all of these places to put in fueling stations in their parking garages, and then that could be a fee that they could charge as used by So that was just something that I had thought of as I've been reading through stuff, and maybe that might be a way for them to feel I could make up some of the money it costs them for more parking. For the hotels, I think one parking space per key is a good ratio. If you get two keys, then obviously you're going in different directions, you have two cars. I would like to reduce the exemption for dining and conference space. I think that is kind of one size fits all, and I don't think that's appropriate. As we say, many of our hotels are going to have different sizes, different needs, different kinds of conferences. I've been to some conferences where they are jam-packed, one next to the other on card tables across a 1,000 square foot, you know, length of a room, and row after row after row, where they're selling goods and services and stuff. All those people need cars. All those people bring their stuff in in vans, and they're all going to pack them up and take them out again. So I think it's a, a one size fits all isn't too good. I do think just a blanket 5,000 square foot should be removed. I think you can give a small allotment for, like, say, 1,500, or option C, which staff recommended, and go from there. Again, any parking spaces for employees and additional employees that they may need if they have conferences and have additional need for people to serve the conference and all that, then that should be, that should be outside of the gated locked area for cars, because parking spaces should be accessible outside of any gated area, especially guest parking. And that's the only way that they're going to be able to get use of that parking. If it's in a gated area, then they can't get to it. So guest parking, that needs to be open, hotels and anything else. Employee parking, it should be tagged, they could have areas that are set aside for employee parking within the gated area so that their cars are safe and there. Basically, I like the room requirements, and the biggest problem I have is to read, to just automatically allow a 5,000 square foot exemption. I don't think that's appropriate. So that's what I have on hotels.
Perhaps we'll have a motion on page 13 in this item. I give it to Vice Mayor Janik.
Thank you. I have a question for staff, our attorney most likely. So item one, lower the base per room requirement from 1.25 to 1 per room. Do I need to make a motion on that, be seconded and vote on it? I mean, is that the procedural way to accomplish that?
Mayor and Vice Mayor Janik, if I'm understanding you correctly, Vice Mayor, the change that you're referencing, the 1.25 changing and being amended to 1, is already a change represented in the proposed amendment. So for changes that are already in the staff-proposed amendment, the council will simply adopt the ordinance when you're ready to do so. You don't have to amend it. Again, for changes that are not already in what the ordinance is that the staff has proposed, this council needs to make amendments to the proposed ordinance 4,500 and the related parking text agreement. I really think it's part of the resolution prior to voting finally at the end of all of your amendments on adopting the ordinance. So let me just say, let's say that the council wants to amend the exception 5,000 square feet to 1,500, and let's say they want to do that for both indoor and an additional 1,500 for outdoor commercial use and meeting facilities. As the mayor is suggesting, that motion to amend proposed...
What is posted already...
Proposed...
Would be an amendment that we could bring up as an amendment, and then we could vote on that and be done with it. Essentially, if you're in agreement with the other items that are highlighted, except for that, that's the only part that would amend, be amended. And conclude.
I, I'm sorry, Mayor. I was looking for my paper here. It's actually an amendment to resolution number 12, the proposed resolution number And you can do that, as the mayor is suggesting, systematically throughout, and then at the end, we can look at what the text amendment is. Brian's going to try to keep up with your changes. We can look at that at the end and see if the council wants to vote for that holistic now proposed parking text amendment. Or the council can simply do it more informally, and council will try to keep up with your changes if we know that there's a consensus on the council.
Okay, I'll give it a shot. I would like to make an amendment to the proposed resolution 12141, under Article 9, item 1, travel accommodation hotels, to reflect included a 2,000 square foot exception for commercial uses that are within the same building as the hotel.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, mark your votes, please.
No.
We will now, we have a vote of 5 to 2. We will now go to page 5, multifamily residential. And this is in particular, again, a reference to dwellings, multifamily residential, it happens to be on page 15, and it repeats, excuse me, oh, I'm sorry, guest parking requirement. So that, just to focus on that, at the present time, the multifamily ordinance says one per eight units. Do I have any motion or discussion on that topic? Councilwoman Whitehead.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion on resolution 12141, on the item referring to multifamily residential outside Old Town and downtown area. I would like to accept the changes other, well, to change it from 1 to 8 to 1 to 6, but other than that, keep it the same.
Second. We have a motion and a second pertaining to an amendment to ordinance 12141, as stated. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Councilwoman Kapuri.
I think that it's okay to reduce to 6, but would that not impact the rest of the numbers? I don't know whether this question would be for Mr. Grant or our city. Am I on the wrong thing? Okay. Maybe I'm on the wrong item. Councilwoman...
This is regarding the, just the guest parking. So instead of 1 to 8, it's...
Got it. Okay, but I'm going to maintain my question then, because if we change the guest parking, does that not impact the rest of this? Are we going to, are we going to treat that separately? We're next going to go to the, because this, this looks like it's the same thing.
We just go to this one, and now we're going to do this one.
This is part of it.
No, 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 we just go to this one.
Got it? Okay. Then retract my question.
Vice Mayor Janik, another comment, or...
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. Could you refresh my memory on what the base requirement is for multifamily residential guest, base requirement? What is, what are the base requirements? Are we just talking about base requirements for parking? I think this goes back to what Councilwoman Kapuri asked. Or does it say we're accepting the base requirements for studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, and we're going to make one change, which is 1 to 6 for guest parking?
Vice Mayor Janik, I believe this is just guest parking right now.
Thank you.
And again, I'm referring to page 7 of the actual exhibit, which corresponds with that. So instead of having 1 per 8 units, it would be 1 per 6. So we have a motion, a call for vote. Please vote on the amendment. I hear 5 to 2. Next, we will go to multifamily residential Old Town area, and this is modifying the base requirements to match outside Old Town and downtown. If we look at this, I believe it corresponds closer to item B or example B, which we saw in the three illustrations. Councilwoman Whitehead.
Yeah, I was going to ask staff, can you put up the chart that showed the Kimsey, and then it showed the additional parking? And I, while they're putting that slide up, I want to thank all the callers who brought up the Kimsey. That did not happen by accident. That happened by a council who is absolutely committed to making sure that developers self-park their projects. So I also, I was a little saddened to hear that those business owners that are legitimate that have different opinions are somehow considered not real. I have met many of the business owners, and architects are actually legitimate business owners, and they own a project, and they, so we have to be very open-minded and accepting that people have different perspectives, and that each section of downtown has very real parking problems, but the different quadrants have different underlying issues. So that brings me up to a question to staff. When we talk about Main Street, which I have to tell you, the bookstore, some of these businesses, and I hear from dentists and hairdressers that cannot get, their customers have a hard time finding a parking space, and that is something I'm committed to solving. But if you take Main Street, where there's a parking problem, I'm told, are there any residential units, are there any residential complexes that are impacting parking on Main Street?
Councilwoman Whitehead, currently, there are not any projects. Museum Square has been approved, but not constructed. Other than that, there are no large multifamily projects affecting it.
So I just want to say that we are, again, committed to having these projects self-parked, but passing an ordinance, whether we make it, no matter how many parking spots we allow, we require of a multifamily complex, it's not, it is not going to solve the problems on Main Street. So we're committed to solving the problems on Main Street in addition to making sure that apartments self-park or other multifamily. So thank you.
So our previous amendment had to do with multifamily residential outside of the Old Town. We're on item number, number 3, which is multifamily residential in Old Town and downtown. And I would be open to an amendment or... And I would be open to an amendment, or, and it also lists guest parking requirement currently as one space per eight units. So Councilwoman Whitehead.
I guess it's me again. I do have a proposed amendment that I would like to make. One thing that, again, and I think some of the callers mentioned this, is there, and I hear it from people often, that they don't want the high rises, they don't want the big apartment complexes, they want the unique Scottsdale look. Well, I got to tell you, the way we do that is we incentivize, we enable, it's not even incentivize, we enable the small landowners to invest in their small properties, bring in unique businesses, bring in a few residents on top. So we have to enable the small guy to invest and to stay in order to avoid the inevitable, the high rises, because if this council doesn't approve it, yes always wins. There will be a future council that will. So based on that, I do have some recommended amendments on this. I would like to create two different parking categories in the downtown area. I would like to have Category 1 represent 20 units or less, and for those 20 units or less, I would like to have the one-to-one parking ratio that exists today. And I just want to, I want to point out that I would like to remove the waiver. I think I'll start with the downtown overlay waiver, which is very complicated right now. What page is that? Can somebody help me out?
Could we get to that one later?
Okay, sorry. It ties into this. Okay. Just, just know that I am changing the waiver down the road, or I will be asking to change the waiver. Okay, so Category 1 will be 20 units or less, and the parking ratio will be as it is today, one-to-one, so one bedroom, one parking spot, two bedrooms, and two parking spots. And it will not have a, it will not have a guest parking requirement as long as it's in the downtown area, and we know that there's, I can't remember the number, we have about 8,000 public parking spots downtown. And then for Category 2, I would like to have the parking as staff recommended, which is, I think, Category B, if you pulled that up, basically the Kimsey arrangement. So you have 1.25, 1.3, 1.7, 1.9, and 1 to 6 guest parking. That's my...
Well, what I'm going to suggest here is that you've got an opportunity to affirm everything on Page 15, except you would want one to six, one guest space for one to six. That's the large category. That's the large category that's, that's on Page 15. Now, the other category, we will come to with the downtown overlay. So do not, I don't think it's, it would be useful to have a split category when you can approach the downtown category in, in another spot.
I guess I would like to ask legal on that, because I want to have, I think dwellings multifamily should be, should, that is the location that we should specify, that these 20 and under. I don't know if it's a legal question or a Randy Grant question. I think that the waiver, I mean, I'm fine, as long as I accomplish what I'm trying to accomplish. Is there any comment from legal on...
May I just suggest again, if we get to the downtown overlay, and you say this applies to up to 20 units, then you're covering in that category that specificity, rather than saying, in the dwelling multifamily, saying you have a split category there. Just in the, in the area of downtown overlay, say this applies up to 20 units. So you're able to describe that characteristic, up to 20 units, if you want to add that, rather than trying to split the category in dwellings multifamily.
No, I appreciate that, and I guess I am trying to be, thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate it. It does make sense to me. I wonder if the dwellings multifamily should be, should state, though, in, in the downtown that it is greater than 20, if we should state it twice. Again, I would take some guidance. I understand what you're saying, Mayor, and I know you're getting me to the same place. I just want to double-check if...
It seems to me that you're agreeing with everything on Page 15, except that you want six units for guest parking in that, in that box, in that box of multi...
Okay.
We are dealing with downtown, and we're dealing with multifamily dwellings, but the only change that you're making, because you repeated those same numbers at the larger, was that one per six guest parking.
Yeah, except I made a big change. I guess I'll turn this to Randy, because I'm trying to figure out how this is going to be used in a practical sense. Randy, would you, and I, I think it's just my lack of understanding, and I want to make sure that I am not voting on something that is not, you know, is different from what I'm trying to accomplish. So if we're doing, I don't even want it to be an exception, I'm looking for a separate code, so for smaller 20 and under complexes.
Mayor Ottega, Councilwoman Whitehead, what essentially it sounds like you're saying is, we take the portion of that box that's been stricken through, we take the strike through off, and above that, put a heading of, for projects of 20 units or less, then A and B there would apply. Above what's highlighted, we would put for projects 20 units or more, then that, those ratios would apply. I think that's what you're...
That seems cleaner, and I just wasn't reading the strike through, so yes. I think that, I mean, to me, that seems cleaner rather than having an exception.
You know, and I'm agreeing with you with that answer from staff, but your only other exception was one space for six units. So you would clarify that we would remove the strikeout on the top, and then substitute six guest units, one space per six guest units. Is that what I heard, or did you say one per five?
So it sounds, Randy, it sounds like there's two boxes suddenly. Am I hearing two boxes? One that has the strike, we undo the strike through, and we add a caveat that it's 20 and under. Then we have, then I, a separate box that has everything in the highlighted, and it refers to above 20, and it is one to six is the only change.
I'm going to look for guidance from our legal here, and then we will get it right. Let's go.
Thank you. Mayor, to try to help the council understand the changes that are being recommended, and to make sure that staff is getting those accurately, Brian Cluff has pulled it up and has tried to capture what Councilwoman Whitehead is trying to describe. Well, and Mayor, I think your larger point is, we'll get to the waiver when we get to that portion of the text amendment. But right now, please let us know, Councilwoman, if we've captured the amendments correctly that you're trying to describe.
I can't see.
Brian, you're going to have to, yeah, blow that up.
And probably...
Yes, thank you.
To clarify that as well, for A and B, it should also say that there would be one space for every six units as guest parking for the...
No, because I am, I am saying for the smaller communities, for these small, narrow lots, that is not, I don't think that's, it's not feasible. So if you have 120 units, you can do that, but what we're trying to do is incentivize the not-every-city USA projects. And so I am, I am respectfully, respectfully asking, and this is based on conversations with people who do want to invest and keep their projects low-rise, so I am exempting...
Good, no problem.
Thank you for understanding.
I asked that question, so, okay. Councilwoman Kaputti.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we get that slide back on that showed increase of 16%, increase of 30-something percent, increase of, you know, when we make these changes, we had that slide that showed what it translates to, an increased parking? Because obviously, staff thought one and eight was a good idea based on the A, B, C, D that comes before it, and, and those things all together translated to an increase in 16%, right, of the parking in a, right? So is that, you're, so Councilwoman Whitehead, you're suggesting that we go with A, the staff proposal for anything greater than 20?
No, no, it's not there. It's the one we don't have.
I think actually she was more specific about two units, two spaces for a two-bedroom, so without, without needing guest parking.
Yes. Basically, what exists today for the entire downtown, I'm asking to limit to just 20 and under.
Thank you. Is that going to be, well, Vice Mayor Janik, and then I'll ask for the motion.
Can we go back to the expanded slide where you had two parts to dwellings multifamily? The expanded verbiage, one parking space per one, per dwelling unit for units with one bedroom or less? That's not it. Yeah, the text, I'm sorry. Yeah. There was a, I'll just mention it, there was a problem. I think that what Councilwoman Whitehead was saying was for buildings with 20 equal to or less than 20, it's the one parking space per dwelling unit, and then it was for greater than 20, we'd go with pretty much what's there, except it would be parking of one to six.
That, that's the legislative draft rather than the slide, so if we can go back to the legislative draft.
Thank you for the clarification.
And so I would entertain an amendment as shown per Councilwoman Whitehead, and requiring one space per every six units when it's greater than 20 units. Otherwise, they would be providing one per one bedroom and two for any more than two bedrooms. And I would second that. Ooh. Any other discussion? Okay, mark your votes, please. It carries five to two. Now we get an easy one. Let's look at Page 5, the offices. Question for call centers, and as it's posted, it is shown as the new requirement of one space per 200 feet of gross floor area. Councilwoman Littlefield.
Thank you, Mayor. Like I said before, when we talked about this, I don't recommend any change for the general office from what staff recommends. One space for 300 square feet seems adequate for office parking, and then I think we should add the, to the ordinance, the staff suggested call center space of one space for 200 square feet gross floor area. And of course, include free parking for all our employees under the current code.
So at the, at the present time, we won't need an amendment to that, because it's posted as such. Thank you. Let's look at a downtown overlay waiver. I, I find it remarkable that probably this was handled by that other item, but it, it deals with the potential of adding some commercial space to a landlocked or a small lot, and that recommendation was published at, originally at 500 square feet, and it's coming back at 1,000 square feet instead of 500 feet. And the other purpose was to, basically, by the time they added a garage at the ground level, they're carving out 500 square feet. So may as well allow 1,000 feet if they're willing to add more, you know, upstairs in a commercial way. At the present time, and let me just double-check whether that's written that way, and we will discuss it. Mr. Grant, does that show as 1,000 square feet, I believe? Yeah, on page...
Yes, Mayor, it's on Page 27.
As, as it's shown and posted, I do want to just add on something, kind of as an architect, but I, I believe that for downtown, again, small, narrow lots, they may be only 30 feet wide, I would like to add the possibility of what's called tandem parking. Tandem parking would just allow one car to be parked in back of another, so it could be a deeper garage, and that makes sense if they have a two-bedroom or if they're building two-bedrooms. So that, that will help everyone in a concern. So again, if there's no amendment to that, the only amendment I would suggest is just that we add the possibility of tandem parking. Councilwoman Whitehead?
I think we can also delete, we can delete Page 28D.
Oh, yes, yeah. What's happening is that all of the other acrobatics that were involved when we tried to work out the Old Town, sorry, downtown overlay, are, are crossed out, and they, so they are deleted in that, oh, you said D. Okay, no more than one. Well, as shown is the way it's enlisted.
Actually, if it's okay, I'd like to explain it to any constituents that are watching. So as it currently stands, a, a landowner can build four residential units and not have any residential parking, and I'm, and that was put in, in the code to, again, to incentivize smaller landowners to invest, but what we're doing is we're requiring any residential unit that is built will have parking. So I just want to make that really clear, that we're removing an exemption that allowed four units to have no parking, so, and we're replacing it with very reasonable parking accommodations for these smaller landowners. And that was, that's what we passed. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Durham?
I have a question on, on Page 27, under the, the Arabic numeral that's one that's highlighted, that says this waiver is only available if there is at least one parking spot on site prior to the expansion. Is that supposed to read prior to the expansion or after the expansion?
I believe it should be after the expansion. The reason I say that is because if there's any expansion involved, it's going to be a scraper in order to build second or third floors. And in many cases, properties are built to property line already.
Yeah.
And so thank you for that, for that correction.
The same issue comes up on Page 28, where at the bottom of Page 28 says this waiver is only available if there are at least two parking spaces on site prior to the expansion. I think it's the same issue, and maybe Mr. Grant can tell us if something else is intended. I'm not 100% sure what the intention is there.
Mayor Ottega, Councilman Durham, the intent here was to make sure that there was parking on the lot somewhere, so that we didn't get a lot that had no parking, somebody came in and got a waiver that relieved them from parking for adding an additional 1,000 square feet, and there's still no parking on the lot. So the intent with both of these was, if you have parking there prior to the waiver, then at least we know there is some parking on the lot after the waiver. Thank you.
Well, then, I would just offer one amendment for this issue, and that would just to graphically show tandem parking as possibility for downtown, and I would ask for a second on that.
Mayor?
Thank you. It's been moved in second. Do we have other discussion? Councilwoman Whitehead?
Yes, yes. I just wanted to say I want to amend your motion to include the removal of item D and I on page 28. There will be no more exceptions, exemptions for residential parking in downtown. And I will second that if the mayor accepts my friendly motion, amendment.
In understanding this, we're allowing a, we're making sure that there's only one dwelling and it has at least two parking spaces, and that we're allowing 1,000 square feet offset. And why would we want to strike that? I mean, it seems like it's a useful thing, we're eliminating the four dwelling units with no parking. So I...
Well, I guess I think it's duplicating. We have the exemption for 1,000 square feet where parking is required, but this states that there's an exemption, a waiver, for one dwelling unit added to the development that has, to me, it doesn't make sense. We've got that one unit already covered in the motion we already passed. If one unit is added, if it has one bedroom, there'll be one parking space. If it has two bedrooms, there'll be two parking spaces. And I think...
I think actually she's probably right on that. Is it covered already on page 27? And then, you know, it seems as though calling it a waiver is not necessary. And so I would definitely agree with striking that D from that, from the discussion. It also cleans up the prior space question that Councilman Durham brought up. So we have that in a second. Are you ready to vote? Any discussion?
Mayor, so I understand on page 27, are we striking 1 that is highlighted and I on page 28?
That's correct.
Okay.
We strike 1, and because we're just clarifying how many spaces we need, and we don't need to, it's not a waiver, we're actually requiring it. So that's a good clarification. Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Whitehead. Thank you. We will now go on to the, I think I'd be ready for a full motion. I, let me see if there's, Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Attorney Scott, please clarify.
I'm sorry, Mayor, thank you. I keep, I feel like I keep interrupting you, but staff is trying to figure out exactly where you wanted the tandem parking and if there was consensus on that item. So you raised that item when we were talking about the...
I think an illustration could be made on page 33, for instance, or 34, where it says a typical parking space. And, you know, there could be an addition or an illustration of that. And it would be perhaps the place to do it. And the, otherwise, you're bound into angular parking and parallel parking, and so I think having a tandem parking could be illustrated there in a figure drawing on page, after page 33.
To make sure staff understands, and jump in, Randy, because you're probably better at these concepts. My understanding with tandem parking, being from Missouri and not having a lot of experience with that, is that both cars then have to move in order for the car to come out. And so were you wanting that to be an option across the board, or were you wanting that to be an option on just these smaller projects that have limited parking?
Good, good question. I would say they would have to be under the same ownership. So in other words, a two-bedroom could have tandem parking, because they are required to have two spaces in the downtown small lot, you know, situation. So whether it's appropriate to illustrate it as a, you know, with the graphics that you have in your illustrations, but we could say graphic to follow, but it would actually be perhaps possible to add it as another item right under downtown parking for small lots.
And again, just to make sure we know how to write this up, you're thinking it would just be for residential units when we're parking one residential dwelling that tandem parking spots might be allowed? Or are you also thinking that there are times that tandem parking spots might be allowed for commercial uses?
Only for residential uses. I think that makes the most sense. Well, at this point, thank you for requesting clarification. Go ahead, Randy.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I wanted to clarify under the multifamily parking, could we repeat what we're making the changes? I know it's one space per six units for guest parking. Which of the ratios were we applying? Because I heard both of them.
Staff recommended ratios for 20, for over 20.
Okay. So we're creating the two categories under multifamily, less than 20 and more than 20, or up to 20. And then have one space per one unit and two spaces per two units for the smaller projects, and then the standard ratio for the larger projects.
Correct. With the 1 to 6. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second as amended.
Mayor, I apologize.
Please clarify.
On the tandem parking item, we did not get a vote from Councilmember Milhavan.
I voted no. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And are we ready for the amended motion? Wait, I thought, go ahead, Ms. Scott.
My apologies again to the council. So that staff is clear, and we haven't missed anything, especially as we're trying to figure out where to insert tandem parking. We're still working on that right now. Might I suggest, Mayor, that we take a short recess on this item before you do your final vote on the amended parking text amendment? Move on to boards and commissions. Let staff confer to make absolutely sure we've captured what you've asked us to. We can review then the changes in the finalized document to make it easier for the council to make sure that we've understood you, that the public understands, and the council can vote at that time. Would that be acceptable?
Thank you. Yes, we will do that. We will move on to item number 21, and we will return with the full text. Excellent. Thank you very, very much. At this point, we are awaiting the final text, which is the follow-up, which staff is doing on our discussion of the parking text amendment. It's item 20, it's number 5, TA 2020. And we will share a moment of silence unless there's more. This is where we want to cue the music, I think. But, you know, once again, I have nothing but praise for our acting city treasurer. Thank you very much for your dedication. And could you please tell us a little bit about your interaction with our newly-appointed treasurer and when she will take office? Thank you.
Mayor and members of council, yes, Sonia Andrews will be joining us June 1st. She comes to us from the city of Peoria. I've been having a bit of email communication with her. I think the last communication, she indicated she was busy packing. So she is on her way to making the move, and we are excited to have her. We plan to have a little welcome, get-together, meet and greet for her when she arrives. So looking forward to it. And just wanted to say it was my pleasure serving, so thank you very much for the recognition.
Councilwoman Littlefield?
I'd just like to thank you also for a very well-done job. Thank you.
So at this point, if staff is ready, we'd just like a read-back on the actions that we took regarding the amended ordinance pertaining to the parking. And that was resolution, is resolution 12-1-4-1. Mr. Grant, would you like to, are you with your support group, or would you like to?
Thank you, Mayor. We're trying to get, oh, there's the legislative draft. So I think we're looking at accepting the changes in the legislative draft, except for guest parking on page 7, becomes one space per six units instead of eight. There are then no changes until the hotel travel accommodations on page 13. And the exception is in the section marked exception. It goes from 5,000 square feet to 2,000 square feet. On dwellings multifamily on page 15 of 43, that section is broken out into two sections. The yellow highlight on the screen is what was added this evening. And it says for developments of 20 units or less, the parking ratio is one space per one bedroom, two spaces per two-bedroom, and there is no requirement for guest parking. For projects of more than 20 units, the requirement is as staff recommended, and there is a guest parking requirement of 1 per 6. There are then no changes until page 27 of 43 in the downtown overlay. Under III, I, I, 1, that sentence is stricken. The waiver is only available if there is one parking space prior to. On page 28, DI, subparaphrase, that sentence is removed. This waiver is only available if there's at least two parking spaces. We are adding a sentence on page 38 of 43. And it becomes C, then all of the following will be renumbered accordingly. Zoning administrator may administratively approve tandem parking spaces for residential units under the same ownership. And I believe that is, that's the extent of the changes that I had.
Mayor, can I ask one question, because I didn't have an opportunity to review this in final before we came back out? I thought that that was going to be limited to the downtown?
That's correct. It is.
I don't see that language limiting it. Is it somewhere, is it somewhere else that I'm missing in the ordinance, or does that need to be written in? Oh, I see it now.
Page 38, it's, yeah.
Thank you.
It's there. And Councilwoman Whitehead?
Yeah, page 28. So there is no longer a residential addition parking waiver. So it's D and 1, I guess I, that need to be stricken on page 28.
Well, we are all responsible for this. Councilwoman Caputi, do you have a comment?
Yep, I just want to make one more comment. I think this is good. You know, the world's changing. We've got to stay flexible. I think these are fairly reasonable incremental changes that we've made that are based on facts. I do wanted to just ask a quick question. Councilwoman Whitehead and Councilman Durham had prepared some interesting solutions for other problems that we have in parking that I don't think we got a chance to address tonight. And while I think these are reasonable, there are actually some spot-specific issues in our city that I think we could still continue to have dialogue on. And will we have an opportunity to do that at some point? I'm just curious. I don't know who can answer that.
Sure. At this point, we'll just stick to this. And I'm sure we will definitely follow up on that. Shared information.
Great.
For improving enforcement in those other areas.
Yeah, because, yeah. I mean, it's all, again, everything's interrelated, and we still have issues that need to be tended to, I think, but this is a reasonable first start. Thank you.
Thank you. Accordingly, I will entertain a motion for passage...
Mayor Ortega and council, I apologize. This is Brian Clough. Just to clarify, Councilmember Whitehead's last statement regarding the residential waiver in the downtown overlay, was I clear that this complete section D that's up on the screen now is to be stricken?
Yes, because there no longer is any waiver for residential parking. We've assigned it a quantity. So yes, that's correct.
Okay. I have that. Thank you for the clarification.
And Mayor, can I speak to, I really appreciate Councilwoman Caputi's response. It's almost 10, so I had forgotten. And she, yeah, we spoke to a lot of stakeholders. Can I just say that we're going to hand the ideas that each of you received from staff that Councilman Durham and I compiled? Can I just say that we are going to be handing these to staff, and staff will come forward with a plan in six months? Is that sufficient? Because everybody on council has received these. And absolutely, we want to, the ultimate goal is to make it so parking is not a problem downtown, and it needs to be solved in a number of different ways. Thank you, Councilwoman Caputi, for bringing it up. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to pass regarding the, Vice Mayor Jennings.
I so move.
So can I just clarify?
Yes.
And I'm really going to try hard to make this the last time tonight that I interrupt the council on this important item. But just to clarify, the motion would be to adopt ordinance number 4500 and adopt resolution number 12141 declaring a parking text amendment legislative draft as a public record as amended during the council meeting tonight.
And I have a second from Councilwoman Littlefield. Any further discussion? Please mark your vote.
No.
It carried 6 to 1. At this point, I do want to acknowledge that I would consider your request as a mayor and council item. So that would be in order, and I acknowledge that. At this point, is there any other mayor or council item? Accordingly, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Whitehead. Please mark your, indicate your vote.
Good night, everybody.